I'd like to wish everyone a good evening. We obviously have quite a few recognitions, deserving as so to make tonight, so we'd like to get the meeting started on time. I'd like to ask my fellow board members to please take their seats. And I would further ask that we all rise for the presentation of the colors, the pledge, and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We want to thank the Ovekomo High School JROTC for the color presentation. And I think I still hear the, I'm assuming it's Lafayette Ensemble String Group out in the hallway, providing us with some live entertainment. We thank them. And without further ado... Sure, Mr. Latchelay, go ahead.
Before we get started, I'd like to take this opportunity to not only wish well, to congratulate the Acadiana Wreckin Rams baseball team, who'll be competing Friday in Sulphur in this Class 5A state semifinals. With a victory Friday night, they would play Saturday for the state championship. They've made the semifinals numerous times in the history of Acadiana. They've never made the finals. That will change this weekend. They will make the finals. And I would like to congratulate Coach Scott McCullough, his staff, and all the boys on the Acadiana baseball team, and wish them well and wish them luck. And as always, green and gold forever, and once a Ram, always a Ram.
Thank you, Mr. Latchelay, and go for it, screen. Dr. Aguilar, do you have any opening comments?
Yes, sir. We want to say congratulations to the Lafayette Parish School System high schools on their individual graduation rate gains for the 14-15 school year. Acadiana High School's overall graduation rate was 71.2 percent, a 4.8 percent increase over the previous year. Carron Crow Heights' rate rose 2.5 points to 62.1. Como High School's rate was 79.1, a 5.8-point gain. Lafayette High School's rate was 88.1, a nine-point gain over the previous year. Northside High School's rate was a nine-point gain over the previous year. Early College Academy remained stable at over 95 percent. And David Thibodeau STEM Magnet Academy's rate rose 91.2, a 9.1-point gain. And most importantly, the high schools all showed dramatic improvement in the African-American graduation rate across all of our high schools. So congratulations to those high schools. Thank you. Congratulations and best wishes to our seniors graduating this week and next week. Tomorrow, the Early College Academy will graduate 41 students at 1:00 PM at the Cajun Dome Convention Center. The students will then graduate from SLCC at 6:00 PM. Of the 41 graduates, 10 graduated in December with their associate's degree and are now either attending ULL or plan to attend this fall. One junior who is graduating with her associate's degree and plans to attend LSU this fall, she is 16 years of age. On Friday, May 20th, David Thibodeau STEM Academy will graduate 57 seniors at 6:00 PM at the David Thibodeau School. And on Saturday, Lafayette High will begin the graduation ceremonies at 8:30 AM at the Cajun Dome, followed by Northside at 11:30, Acadiana High at 2:00 PM, Carron Crow High at 4:30, Como High School at 7:00 PM. Also, congratulations to Evangeline, Myrtle Place, Alice Boucher Elementary Schools, and Lafayette High School for earning state certification as an immersion school. We plan to make those recognitions of the principals and staff at a summer board meeting. This Saturday, May 14th, is the Student Arts Expo. LPSS students in pre-K through 12th grade will have their artwork on display at various venues and performances that will occur at the Acadiana Center for the Arts and at the Vermillion Street stage. Performances are scheduled throughout the day, starting at noon until 8:00 PM. Venues include ACA, the Borden's Ice Cream Shop, Carb Diem, Children's Museum, Lafayette Public Library, and many other sites. You will be amazed at the artwork and performances from our students. I'm proud to announce the LPSS Golf Scholarship Committee met today, and I am pleased to announce that a total of 26 students will be receiving a total of $49,200 worth of scholarships. 10 students will receive $3,000 each, 8 students will receive $1,400 each, and 8 students will receive $1,000 each. Individual winners will be contacted prior to graduation. Special thanks to Ms. Molly Goforth and her Lafayette High School students from the Lafayette High Performing Arts Academy for their musical presentation tonight in the lobby just prior to the board meeting. And if you are here just wanting to see a school board meeting and you didn't realize what was happening tonight, tonight we are recognizing many students and support staff employees. Thank you to the parents, families, and guests for joining us tonight. We appreciate your support. To better accommodate so many guests, we will have the following presentations: Fitness, Million Word, and Fast Forward Recognitions. And then, Mr. Angel, with your permission, we'll take a five-minute break to allow our seated guests to leave with their children and allow the next group of guests to be seated. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Aguilar. And we will begin the recognitions by recognizing the physically fit Ms. Samick, who will recognize school fitness winners.
Well, thank you, President Angel. And good evening, and good evening of all board members and Dr. Aguilar. I am Annette Samick. I am the Chief Academic Officer. I do want to thank all of our parents, guests, and also our students for attending tonight. As you can tell, we have many presentations, so we tried to do a little bit of group seating to make sure parents could enjoy and see the recognitions that their children will be receiving. So I am asking all parents that are currently seated to please stay for the first three presentations. We will take a five-minute break. We'll allow you to leave after the last presentation, the third, and then we can allow the next group to come in and be seated. First tonight, we will recognize our 2016 Elementary School Fitness Winners from the LPSS meet that was held on March 21st at Northside High School's track. We will then recognize the accomplishments of our four Louisiana State meet competitors who participated on April 16th in Baton Rouge. Physical Education and Athletic Director, Mr. Bobby Bado, will conduct the recognition. Dr. Aguilar and Mr. Angel, if you would please join us for the students' photos. And board members, if you want to join when a student from your area is called, you're more than welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Samick. Certainly my honor to be here tonight to recognize these outstanding students. First, I'd like to thank the parents for your cooperation in helping these young students be successful. I'm working with the coaches. Second, I'd like for any of the coaches that are present, please stand. Any of the coaches that are here? These coaches start early in the year, developing these young adults. And through our fitness program, this is the second year that we are the state champions. For 22 years, we never won a state championship. Last year, with the hard work of the parents, the hard work of the teachers and coaches and the students, second-time state champions in a row. But I'm going to recognize the local winners in each age group first. And the girls, six and seven-year-old winner, Darian Green. Aubrey Mesh could not be here tonight. She's the eight-year-old girl winner. She's here? Oh, she didn't check in. Come on, come on up. Come on up. Audrey, come get your certificate. Elena Dugar, nine-year-old girl winner. Joshe Batiste, 10-year-old girl winner. And Carrington Eugene, 11-year-old winner. Darian was from Carron Crow Heights, Aubrey's from Galette, Elena's from J Wallace James, and Joshe is from Carron Crow, and Carrington is from Galette. And the boy winners, Tavion Gerard from Boucher, six and seven-year-old winner. TJ Jackson from Carron Crow, eight-year-old winner. Tavion George from Carron Crow. Omari Dupas from Prairie. And Aiden Soe from Milton. These are the top three schools in the total number of points that they earned at the parish meet. And third place was J Wallace James with 5,555 points. And second place, second place was J Wallace James, I'm sorry, Ernest Galette with 5,677 points. And the overall winner this year for the parish was Carron Crow Heights with 6,145 points. Carron Crow Heights had four out of 10 first-place individual winners. At this time, I'd like to recognize our state champion team. I'm going to start with Carrington Eugene was the overall highest point scorer in the state. She is the only member of our last-year team that won the state championship, so she's a two-time state champion. I don't think, Dinesha Laxey, is Dinesha here? Okay, receiving her award will be her coach, Ms. Mary Foss. Thank you, Mary. And for the boys, Omari Dupas from Prairie. And Tavion George from Carron Crow Heights. Thank you, board members and superintendent, for allowing us to recognize these students tonight. Coaches, thank you so much for all the hard work that you do. And parents, thanks for supporting your students and your coaches.
Okay, moving along then, we will now again recognize Ms. Samick, who will help us recognize the top four Million Word Achiever. Ms. Samick?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Before we recognize our top four Million Word Achievers, I do want to congratulate the 1,058 students who reached and passed their 1 Million Word goal. All 1,058 students will receive a Lafayette Parish School System Million Word Achiever T-shirt, thanks to the donations from the City of Scott and the Lafayette Schools Credit Union. Mayor Purvis Morrison of Scott and President/CEO Connie Roy and Brian Legge of the Credit Union are here to present their donations to Dr. Aguilar and Mr. Angel. Each is donating $2,600. There he is. He was kind of caught in the crowd out there. If we could wait just 30 more seconds. No, sir. So total donation of $5,200 will cover the cost of the 1,058 T-shirts for our students. So thank you all very much. Mr. Pat Hanacy is our library specialist, library science specialist. He will explain what the LPSS Million Word Achiever program is about and also announce the district's top four multi-Million Word Achievers. All eligible students were awarded with a T-shirt. The top four winners will be rewarded with a certificate, an LPSS Million Word Achiever T-shirt, an academic medal, and a Barnes &amp; Noble gift card courtesy of the superintendent.
Good evening. Dr. Aguilar, members of the board, Mr. Angel, thank you for allowing us tonight to present these to these great kids. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Aguilar for planting the seed to make this a district initiative. And I'd like to thank all of our librarians who promoted the program with so much enthusiasm. To have 1,058 kids in the district read at least 1 Million Words is really something special. If we have some librarians in the audience, please stand up and be recognized. This is the first year that we've done this, and I feel like it's really going to grow as the years go by. So at the beginning of the school year, our librarians challenged students to read at least 1 Million Words with 85% comprehension accuracy. Students were, the student results were calculated in the Accelerated Reader Program. And just to give you a brief explanation of how the program works, is the kids read a book, they take an AR test, and the program keeps track of the books that were read, the comprehension accuracy, the points that they get, and the number of words that they accumulate. This year, we had students from first grade through the 12th grade and every grade in between reach the Million Word goal. Tonight, we're going to introduce the top four readers in the program, and I'd like to also congratulate all of the people, all of the students who got to the Million Word goal. So first, from Youngsville Middle, 8th grader, Aura Dourain, who read 9,31,462 words. Next, from Paulborough Middle, 8th grader, Haley McAndrew, who read 10,667,980 words. Next, from LJ Alima, 7th grader, Walker Lampkin, who read 10,756,836 words. And finally, the top reader in the district, from Paulborough Middle, 6th grader, Maggie Li, who read 12,875,974 words. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all very much.
Moving along on our agenda, we will now recognize the top 12 student performers with Fast Forward. Ms. Samick?
Thank you, everyone. And this will be our third presentation. After this one, we'll take the little five-minute break to let everyone transition in and out. Tonight, we will honor the top 12 Fast Forward student performers in Lafayette Parish School System. Fast Forward improves the cognitive skills of memory, attention, processing rate, and sequencing, and has been utilized in 21 schools this year in Lafayette Parish. The schools are Elementary, Ernest Galette, Austin, Evangeline, Dusan, JW Falk, Carron Crow Heights, Westside, Ridge, J Wallace James, SJ Montgomery, Alice Boucher, Live Oak. Middle schools, Acadian Middle, Carron Crow, Scott, Judice, Paulborough, and Lafayette Middle. High schools include Northside and Carron Crow, and then we have K-12 for NP Moss Preparatory School. Next year, we will be adding three additional schools, two in elementary with Myrtle Place and Charles Burke, and an additional high school at Acadiana High. We would like to thank Cheryl Leatherberry, Senior Vice President of Sales and Services of Scientific Learning, for her support in recognizing our students tonight. Joining us tonight is Mr. Jeb Bowle with Scientific Learning to award a special gift card to the students. Jeb, if you would please join Dr. Aguilar and Mr. Angel in the presentation. I also want to say many thanks to Diane Hernandez, who has served as the part-time program coordinator. She started with 16 schools, and then we added five more in January, making her part-time job very challenging. Ms. Hernandez, we'll give you a brief description of the significance of tonight's recognition regarding the growth accomplished by our students, and we'll announce the winners and the number of years of growth for our top students. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Aguilar, President Angel, board members, and audience. Fast Forward uses a reading progress indicator assessment, which is a reliable and validated measure designed to show how students are responding to Fast Forward product use. RPI provides a baseline by which reading skill gains by Fast Forward participants can be monitored as content is completed, and it provides periodic snapshots of how students align on a national percentile scale. The students here tonight, we recognize, have achieved the top 10 highest equivalency gains from their baseline assessment to their last assessment, which is quite an accomplishment. They also have had quite an increase in their national percentile gains. So it is with honor and my honor to present to you these students. They come to us from various schools, and we had three who tied for the rank of number 10. And I'm going to call out their names. We have a couple of students missing, but I'm going to call their names anyway. I want them recognized. Destiny Bailey is an 8th grader at NP Moss. She had an equivalency gain of four years, five months, and that was for this school year. When Kevey and George, Acadian Middle, he was a 7th grader, and he too had a gain of four years, five months. Then we have Kayden Flugence. He is a 2nd grader at J Wallace James. He had a gain of four years, five months. Louis Francois, 8th grader, NP Moss Prep, had a gain of four years, six months. Brontrel, Senegal, JW Falk Elementary is a 4th grader who had a gain of four years, eight months. Santos Perez, an 8th grade student at NP Moss Prep, had a gain of four years, eight months. Ava Gaven, 2nd grader, J Wallace James, had a gain of four years, eight months. I'm not sure this student is hearing unless they're in the audience. Jonay Thomas, 9th grader at Northside High, had a gain of four years, nine months. Manny Vietar, a 7th grader at Judice Middle, had a gain of five years. Maya Smith, a 7th grader at Acadian Middle, had a gain of 5.5 years, five and a half years. And I will tell you, Acadian Middle didn't begin Fast Forward until January. So the Acadian Middle schools did this in half a year. Okay, our two, we have a tie for first place. These two young ladies just knocked the roof off of the assessments. We have 2nd grader, Virginia Sheridan, from J Wallace James, with a gain of eight years, three months. And Ms. Journey Box, who actually started this whole thing, because hers was the first one we caught, is a 3rd grader at Carron Crow Heights, and she had a gain of eight years, three months.
And we'll break. So I do want to thank all our guests tonight that are in the audience. At this time, you are welcome to leave, go join your children, and again, thank you very much for participating.
Dawn. Did you see the video I sent you of our granddaughter? You should see that little girl. That little girl, um, hold the cat by the neck, it's just hanging, cat doesn't do anything. Next would be whatever. It's incredible. Hey, Miss Mary, what we gonna do? What we gonna do? Just hang in there. That's all we can do.
He was our coach for 30 years. Our coach is now his son, Matt McCullough, the Acadiana baseball.
We want, I want to meet with a group of people to see, to see what can be done, what can we, what do we, to see what we want. We can't come up and say what do we want without having the knowledge to back it up.
People ask questions, so maybe answer the people's questions.
If we do this, this is going to be the result. If we do this, this is going to be the result.
And, um, Dawn, I mean, that's the whole reason why it's about teachers and students. It doesn't matter where, as long as you give them the resources they need, it's gonna work.
It's gonna work. It's gonna, if you feel, if you feel.
She didn't put my tar quotes, my books.
She took it out of context.
Yeah, yeah, she did. Because it said that it doesn't matter where the programs are, the teacher first. And their resources make it work. Doesn't matter where, and she made sure she put that in there.
What they tried, I mean, rightfully so, I gave, I gave them some props. I was on Kenneth's show on Sunday, and I applaud them for taking up their cause. You know, they all showed up, signed a petition, that's fine. You know, that's, that's fine. But we've got to, we've got to do what we got to do.
That's right.
We've got to do what we got to do.
Exactly.
We can't allow, we can't allow that, that move to happen. We can't, not the way it's structured, yeah. But we got to come up with a plan to say, this is the way this is going to look if this happens.
Exactly.
That's what we're working on.
Have Eva answer that question.
Yeah. But I'm even thinking, when we meet in June, that we table it. We don't make the decision until July. Give us time to get the data right.
How long that they need to put all that in place now? They shouldn't take it.
They shouldn't take it. July and August should be, you know, we, we, oh, yeah. They're pretty much time to get all of the data together. We got nine months.
Right.
We got nine months. Well, I'm looking to table it until at least July, when we get all the data together, find out how many kids going from Northside going to that one.
All right, we're ready for the next group of worthy recognitions. Again, I would ask my fellow board members to take their seats, please, and get the program And again, I would recognize Ms. Samick, so that she may give due recognition to the Social Studies Fair winners.
Yes, sir, thank you. Right before we do Social Studies Fair, we do have one student from Fast Forward who just arrived with her family, so we'd like to recognize her. Dr. Aguilar and Mr. Angel for a photo, please. Diane Hernandez would do the honor.
Okay, we have Destiny Bailey. She is an 8th grader at NP Moss, and she made four years, five months gain this year.
And parents, we're going to do three recognitions in a row. We do ask that you please remain seated for all three recognitions, and then when we are done, we'll allow you, we'll take a short break and allow you all to leave with your children. Thank you. Tonight, we will recognize students who participated and placed in the Parish, Regional, and State Social Studies Fairs. Three students from Lafayette Parish schools placed second in the State Social Studies Fair in Lake Charles this spring. To advance to the state competition, students had to compete and place at the Parish competition, then Regionals at UL Lafayette. Mr. Battle, Social Studies Specialist, will recognize the winners. The top three students will receive a certificate and an academic medal. Dr. Aguilar and Mr. Angel, please join us for a photo.
Good evening, thank you. First, I'd like to thank the parents for your support of your students throughout the school year, and of course, congratulations to the students on their hard work. Are there any social studies teachers in here? If you would, please stand up and be recognized for your outstanding support. Thank you very much. The first group that we're going to recognize are those who placed first in Parish, but unfortunately did not move on and place in Regionals or in State. But they did an outstanding job in winning our Parish competition. First is Christopher Taylor of Woodvale, first place. Zoe Prejon of Broadmoor, first place. They've already received a certificate for their participation earlier. Abriana Vincent, Westside. The next one is a group project, and that's Makara Falk and Michaela Falk from Prairie. Once again, once again, these are all first-place winners in the Parish. Next one is Andy Von Hagen, LJ Alamo, first place. Lily Cormier, LJ Alamo, first place. Bonnie Roy, LJ Alamo, first place. Erin Young, LJ Alamo, first place. All right, the next is a group project, and that's Logan Pete and Jonah Smith from Broussard, first place. Then we have another group winner, Mackenzie Striplin and Taylee Lamell from Acadian Middle. Now we have those students who not only placed in Parish, but advanced to the Regionals, and they are Lily Turner from Woodvale, second in Parish and third in Regionals. Mr. Canez, you might as well stay, we have another Woodvale. Mara Leonard from Woodvale, and she has a first in Parish and a first in Regional. Haley Vidreen, J Wallace James, a first in Parish and a third in Regional. Iris Lorman, Evangelion, a first in Parish and a third in Regional. We have a group winner, Shelby Mesh from Milton, and Eva Cornet from Milton, a second in Parish and a first in Regional. Another, another group winner from Acadian Middle, Alexis Borda and Mackenzie Romero, second in Parish and third in Regional. The next group that will receive a medal and a certificate placed in Parish, Regionals, and in State. The first one is Kayla Ruth Morvant from Myrtle Place. She got a second in Parish, a second in Regional, and a second in State. The next one is a group project, and they're from LEO Judice. It's Alan Trahan and Julia Halkin. They got a first in Parish, a second in Regional, and a second in State. Once again, congratulations to all the Social Studies students for your hard work and your successes. Parents, once again, would thank you for your support, and teachers. I'm sorry, yes, I did. I apologize to you. You were right in front of the line as well, weren't you? This is Mr. Brendan Stone from LJ Alamo. He has a second in Parish and a second in Regionals. All right, we missed another one. This is a first in Parish, Dylan Jennings from Woodvale. Did we miss anybody else? Once again, congratulations to all the young students. Parents, thank you for your support, and teachers, thank you for all the hard work that you do to prepare these students.
Our next group of recognized students will be the Como High School Speech and Debate Team. Ms. Samick?
Thank you. Recently, the Como High School Speech and Debate Team competed against 60 schools at the Louisiana High School Speech League Tournament of Champions, which was hosted at Mount Carmel Academy in New Orleans. The students reached the final rounds in every event entered. Como High accumulated the most sweepstake points and won first place at this year's state tournament, becoming the 2016 Louisiana State Speech and Debate Champions. This makes Como High School a repeat, as they were the 2015 state champions. In addition, the Morris Block Performance Award is given out each year to the individual student who accumulates the most sweepstake points in performance events at the state tournament. The 2016 Morris Block Performance Award was given to Como's Quest Broussard. I do want to say congratulations to the sponsors, Mr. Jacob Isasimo or Simon?
Simo.
Simo. And Ms. Sandra Broussard, and also to the principal, Ms. Mary Sonnier. So a round of applause to the sponsor and to the principal. The following students that we will recognize are members of the 2016 Louisiana All-State Speech Team, placed at the State Tournament of Champions, or qualified for the NCFL National Tournament in Sacramento, California, or the NSDA National Speech and Debate Tournament in Salt Lake City, Utah. Director of Middle and Secondary Schools, Mr. Brian Abar, will award each student with an academic medal. Mr. Angel, Dr. Aguilar, if you'll please join us, and if the, Ms., I was going to say, Ms. Morris, if you would like to join for the Como area. Paige Albright, Paige is an All-State Speech State Champion Declamation and NCFL National Jenna Baird, Jenna is a NCFL National Qualifier. Megan Baird is an All-State Speech Team member. Megan Baird is an All-State Speech Team Member. Quest Broussard is All-State Speech Team Member, Second Place State Humorous Interpretation, Second Place State Oral Interpretation, Second Place State Dual Interpretation, Louisiana Performing Arts Award, NCFL National Qualifier, NSDA National Qualifier. And remember, Quest was also the 2016 Morris Block Performance Award winner. Colby Camp is a NCFL National Qualifier. And Mr. Joe Craig, if you would join us for the next photo in congratulating your sons, Cecil Craig and Ethan Craig, they're both NCFL National Qualifiers. And Joe, how about a father and son's photo there? I know being an administrator, you miss out on a lot of the events with your sons, Destiny Darby, All-State Speech, NCFL National Qualifier. Dagel Fugilay, NCFL National Qualifier. Maggie Graham, All-State Speech, NCFL National Qualifier. Jack Gosson, All-State Speech, Fourth Place State Duet Acting. Ashlyn Jones, All-State Speech, NCFL National Qualifier, NSDA National Qualifier. Madison LeBlanc, NCFL National Qualifier. Timothy Ledey, All-State Speech, State Champion Dual Interpretation, Second Place State Dramatic Interpretation, NCFL National Qualifier, NSDA National Qualifier. Laura Ledey, NCFL National Qualifier. Jacayla Lee, All-State Speech Team Member. Austin Moes, NCFL National Qualifier. Brooklyn Nicanon, NCFL National Qualifier. Alejandro Perez, All-State Speech Team Member, Second Place State Duet Acting, Third Place State Dual Interpretation, NCFL National Qualifier, NSDA National Qualifier. Taylan Ratliff, All-State Speech Team Member, State Champion Dramatic Interpretation, State Champion Dual Interpretation, NCFL National Qualifier, NSDA National Qualifier. Is it Alexis? Alexis Sam, NCFL National Qualifier. Aliana Spira, All-State Speech Team Member, Fourth Place State Duet Acting, NCFL National Andrea or Andrea Tina, All-State Speech Team Member, Second Place State Duet Acting, Third Place State Dual Interpretation, NCFL National Qualifier. Madison Wolf, All-State Speech Team, Second Place State Dual Interpretation, NCFL National And I would like to thank all the Speech and Debate Team members for being present. And we're going to have one more presentation before we transition.
We will now recognize our 2016 State Literary Winners. Ms. Samick?
Okay, well, thank you. We're a little bit out of order, so we might have to kind of ask some students to make sure we don't miss anyone. I'm going to just start at the end of the list and work my way up to make sure that everyone's name is recognized, whether they're present or not. Earning fourth place in, oh, I'm sorry, let me introduce that. The Louisiana High School Rally Association is an association of middle and senior high schools that are recognized by the State Department of Louisiana and colleges and universities that coordinate the district and state competitions each year. The purpose of Literary Rally is to provide opportunities for students to achieve a greater awareness of the importance of education and gain a renewed determination to develop their talents and academic excellence through friendly competition. Furthermore, it's an enlightened way of recognizing and rewarding students who excel in that for which all schools are primarily established, which is for our academic pursuits. The ULL District Rally occurred on March the 5th, and the winners were entered into state competition. State Rally occurred on April 16th at LSU in Baton Rouge. Congratulations to the many LPSS students who qualified both regionally and did participate in the state event. Those being recognized tonight, placed first, second, third, or fourth, or in some events, superior, which is a first, excellent, which is second, and good, which is a third, at the state rally. Mr. Brian Abar, Director of Middle and Secondary Schools, will present medals, and we'll begin with our fourth-place winners, who will receive a certificate, and we will move up to third, second, then first. We have two fourth-place winners to be recognized. First one is Everett Crandock, Biology 2, from Lafayette High School. Fourth-place winner in Advanced Math Precalc, Serenity Broussard from David Thibodeau STEM Our third-place winners will receive the bronze medals from David Thibodeau. And Arianna, your event was left off of my list. Could you tell me what you earned third place? Principles of Business, thank you. From Lafayette High School, third place Journalism, Melissa Watson. You don't hear this very often, but it is for middle and secondary schools. So for middle school, Paul Bro, third place, French 2, Morgan Domain. Third place Lafayette High School, French 1, Abigail McCloskey. Third place Financial Math, Lafayette High School, Georgiana Moore. Third place, and again, it was, I apologize, I have two lists I'm working off of. For Environmental Applications, third place Xavier Simmons from Como High School. Third place Lafayette High School for Biology 1, a common name, Anna Espinoza. Third place David Thibodeau STEM Academy for BCA is Jason Kerrie. In the next two awards, earning the recognition of good, which is third place bronze medal, both from Lafayette High School, for French 2 Interpretation Reading, Shelby Richard. French 4 Interpretation Reading, Kaylee Berg. Next, we will have second-place winners, which will earn the silver medals. Again, we have a middle school winner, Paul Bro, second place, French 3, Emily Como. Second place Lafayette High School Environmental Science, Autumn Ritter. Second place Lafayette High School Environmental Applications, Aleisha Trahan. Second place Lafayette High School in Chemistry, Ameline Miller. Second place Karen Crow High School, BCA, Joseph Venable. Lafayette High School, second place, Agro Science 1, Gracie LeBlanc. Acadiana High School, second place, Accounting 1, Connor Surreal. We will now move into all of our gold winners, and the list is extensive. Lafayette High School, Spanish 1, first place, Minette Eroy. For Speech, Extemporaneous Speaking, Como High School, first place, Ashlyn Jones. Lafayette High School, first place, Spanish 4, Extemporaneous Speaking, Jackson Munsel. Lafayette High School, first place, French 4, Extemporaneous Speaking, Madeline Drake. Lafayette High School, first place, French 3, I knew I was going to get tied up on that one, speaking, Ambecca Rajashani. Lafayette High School, French 2, Extemporaneous Speaking, first place, Heidi Thavis. Glad I'm done with those. All right, all of these are for Como High School. They're all for one-act play, so I will read their names. Each one got a gold medal. Colin Rubashow. Haley Hoyt. Isaiah Pickett. First place Lafayette High School, Principles of Business, Ria Catari. First place Acadiana High School, Parenthood Education, Summer St. Anne. First place Northside High School, IBCA, Jarlin Moore. Como High School, first place in Health, Diane Farm. Say it for me. Acadiana High School, first place, Agro Science 3, Kalen Shake Snyder. And then we should have two, but I see one. We have two people I haven't recognized yet. These two winners are considered to be overall winners. Overall means that not only did they win in their division, they won in Division 1, they won Division 2, they won Division 3. In other words, they were the top winner in the whole district rally in the state of Louisiana. In Calculus, first place, and if I remember, it's a perfect score, Chad Wood. And almost a perfect score in Physical Science, first place Lafayette High School, Matthew And not only do these two gentlemen get the recognition, they're also awarded a $500 scholarship from... And that, Mr. Angel, will end my presentations tonight. At this time, I would like for the audience, if you would like to leave with your children to go ahead and transition at this time, and our support staff recognition will be next. Thank you very much.
So when we get to the elementary winners?
It's gonna be Brenda Broussard first, and Tabitha Abar.
Milton, what's the clause? Who has her?
You're gonna be in front of Ms. Boutin. Find Ms. Boutin, she's, it's towards the back of the line, just ask for Ms. Boutin, you're gonna be right in front of her.
Okay, thank you, so I'm right in the back. We're gonna say it right when we call them, they're gonna get it at that same time. So where is?
Brenda Broussard is coming in first.
Okay, where is she?
And Tabitha Abar. I'll tell you whenever we come up to her.
Brenda. And Tabitha. This is Tabitha.
All right, if you give me your attention, we'll move along. And we will, at this time, recognize the outstanding school support employee award winners. Caleb?
Thank you, Dr. Aguilar, Mr. Angel, and members of the board. The Louisiana Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Louisiana Department of Education, the Louisiana Legislature, and the Lafayette Parish School System recognize that school support personnel have a vital role in providing an education for our children. So many school support employees render time and talents beyond the call of duty. It is those major achievements in one's job performance that cannot go without special recognition. This is why during the 1990 Legislative Session, Act 1081 mandated the district select one outstanding school support employee from the elementary, middle, and high schools in the system to receive the Outstanding School Support Employee Award. If you wouldn't mind, Dr. Aguilar and Mr. Angel, if you could come up, and Ms. Morrison, at first, we're gonna go ahead and start taking pictures and recognize our recipients. First we have Ms. Kelly Poche, Para-educator, Dussault Elementary. Ms. Sherrell Gaboro, Secretary, Early College Academy. Linda Op, Clerical Assistant, Westside Elementary. The next group is from Mr. Angel's district, Kathleen Gibson, Computer Proctor, Acadian Emily Wang, Para-educator, Karen Crow Heights Elementary. Cliff Broussard, Head Custodian, Karen Crow Middle. Tanya Richard, Clerical Assistant, Evangelion Elementary. And the next group is for Mr. Broussard. Mr. Ray Pat, Head Custodian, Alice Boucher Elementary. Ms. Brenda Broussard, Secretary, Karen Crow High. Ms. Broussard is also our district high school winner. Barbara Sampe, Child Nutrition Manager, J. Wallace James Elementary. Yvette LeBlanc, Clerical Assistant, Live Oak Elementary. Noreen Padilla, Para-educator, Truman Early Childhood Education Center. The next group is for Dr. Chasson. Juanita Gilbo, Clerical Assistant, Paul Bro Middle. Alan Hopkins, Custodian, JW Falk Elementary. Precious Benjamin, Custodian, N. P. Moss Prep. Jonas Edwards, Custodian, David Thibodeau STEM Magnet Academy. Danny Alfred, Custodian, WD and Mary Baker Smith Career Center. The next group is for Mr. Lachey. Elizabeth Shake Snyder, Custodian, Acadiana High. Tammy Sonnier, Para-educator, Charles Burke Elementary. Sandra Lacome, Clerical Assistant, Judy Smith. Colette Wally, Para-educator, Eleo Judy's Elementary. Lynette Lemoine, Para-educator, Prairie Elementary. Maria Ortiz, Para-educator, Ridge Elementary. Christine Olivier, Secretary, Scott Middle. The next group is for Mr. Centany. Vita Hippolyte, Custodian, Lafayette High. Tabitha Abar, Secretary, Lafayette Middle. Ms. Abar is also our district middle school winner. Crystal Savage, Secretary, Edgar Martin Middle. Tessie Shows, Para-educator, SJ Montgomery Elementary. Junius Williams, Custodian, Myrtle Place Elementary. Donna Weiss, Para-educator, Como High. I'm sorry, this is Ms. Morris. Elizabeth Reed, Secretary, LJ Alamo. James Lee, Custodian, Broadmoor Elementary. Geraldine Bork, Para-educator, Milton Elementary Middle. Ronald Williams, I'm sorry, the next group is Mr. Hidalgo. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we accidentally went over one other person. I'm sorry, that was Mr. Ronald Williams, Custodian of Broussard Middle. Julie Raxdale, Para-educator, Ernest Gallett Elementary. Randy Weiss, Custodian, Green Tea Linden Elementary. Mr. Weiss is also our district elementary winner. Joanne Laxey, Child Nutrition Manager, Youngsville Middle.
Want to once again congratulate all of our award winners tonight. Our school system couldn't function without all of us pitching in, and we appreciate all that you do. Our school system couldn't function without all of us pitching in and we appreciate all that you do. We appreciate it. And I want to mention, Ms. Samick, I want you to know that you did a wonderful job on the names. I want you to think of the three of us who are in the military who went all over the world, literally. Think about how our names were pronounced, Latulue, Angel, and Kinesic. All kind of different versions, I can assure you. Okay, moving along then, we'll act on the corrections and our approval of board meeting and committee meetings. Ms. Morris?
I move that we approve in Globo, the minutes listed under 3.1 and the reports under 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4.
Second by Mr. Centeni. We have any questions or comments concerning the motion for members of the public? Members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Nine for, none against.
Thank you. Moving along to information reports. Item 5.1, Technology Impact in the Classroom. Ms. Dickerson?
Good evening, Dr. Aguilar, President, Angel and Board Members. We have a quick technology report. We have been working extremely hard to provide devices to our students in the classrooms and I wanted to give you, I guess, a bird's eye view of how these devices were being utilized and the impact that it has had on our students. So I have a short video and then I have some students here to explain to you how they integrate technology daily in their classrooms.
It's just such an incredible resource, you know. I know that word gets thrown around a lot, but really having something hands-on, minds-on that allows the kids not only to see things more realistically, actually participate in actually creating things, but actually modeling things, interactives that are available to them 24/7. It just opens up a whole new world. And when you're talking about teachers and them having more tools to put into the hands of students to make that learning not only more accessible, but more pertinent to what they're interested in and what they're naturally curious in, just creates for an amazing, amazing environment for learning.
I think the main thing is my students feel empowered. And I see their use of technology on a big picture. I feel like when they get to high school, everything is going to be online. They're going to be turning in their assignments online, they're going to be taking their test online, they're going to be doing Google Docs, Google Slides, Google Sheets. And pen and paper is going to be a thing of the past. And so I feel so fortunate that my 4th graders are going to be prepared and I feel like they're going to be ahead of the game and that's so empowering for our kids.
Tremendous difference in the classroom. When you walk in a classroom, instead of the teacher asking one student to come to the board to show them, every single student has a device, every single student can show the teacher and answer the question. So the wait time is so much less and the teacher knows that every student can do it. The kids are so much more excited about doing it. Classroom management is so much better because they're engaged, they have these devices. They are incredible. And this is in a 1st grade classroom, not just in 5th grade classrooms.
We use Educreations a lot in math for the kids to be able to explain their thinking and show the answers to a problem. They love to create their own little flip books. They'll write something on one page and then flip to the next page and then to the next page. So sometimes you go into Educreations to look at what your students have done and there's like 30 pages, which is awesome. I've also had kids do like counting books and they'll write like numbers 1 to 20 on the first page and then 21 to 40 on the next page and they try to see how high they can get. We use Doodle Buddy and they take pictures of things and they annotate, they label the pictures, they write sentences that go with the pictures they take, those kinds of things.
You just get a whole open-ended lesson and a totally different kind of mindset when you're going about teaching and educating using those tools.
Our class is structured with slides that guide the instruction, including notes, focus, closure, tips for completing the assignment, they're all included. And then there are times when students will say, can you put that on the website? Or can you post this? Or can I take a picture of that? And the idea of being able to draw something on the board that we can capture and then post for that night to support my students, all of my students, is just wonderful. But in addition to that, I can use, they have a screen recording system and you can do a full explanation and you can post that. So if they were absent or if the tutor needs it or the parent needs it, it's wonderful. Or if a student has an auditory problem and they need to go over it again, it's there.
Teachers, primarily through Google Classroom, but they will collaborate with their students. So if a student is working on an essay, there will be deadlines and timeframes, but the student will share that Google Doc with the teacher and it's a collaborative effort where the teacher's notes are right there in the document and students are doing that same thing with their peers.
We made a slideshow for economics and so I created a template with all the key economics topics that they needed to cover. And so they were able to use Google Slides to create their slideshow, share it with me on the drive. We were able to comment back and forth and it was so effective and meaningful for our students.
When we do PBIS rotation stations, the kids have created videos now for those stations and those videos get dropped in a shared folder so that teachers have access to them and can revisit a video for expectations in the cafeteria at any time. And the kids create the video, they upload the video, they share the video. It really is becoming very student-centered.
It's a big thing to take on, to move from having four devices in a classroom to having 30. But with teachers that are so technology-driven and kids that that's all they know how to work on, it completely changes, but it's time for us to teach the way our kids automatically know how to learn. And it's our younger kids that are the best on them.
My personal belief is that we need to be spending our time teaching our children how to use technology correctly, not limiting them on what they can use. Technology's not going away, it's everywhere.
Again, I just don't think people realize how limitless those tools can make learning. And you know, when you talk about great teachers, I think it needs to be said, great teachers are going to have great instruction no matter what. But when you give great teachers great tools, well then that's when you really, really close the achievement gap. And I think that's why we're all here as educators.
So this evening we have here with us-
It's just such an incredible resource, you know.
Ms. Bailey de Barden-Laden, I may be pronouncing that incorrectly. Ms. Barden-Laden is part of the pilot project from AXI and Promethean. And part of that pilot, you can come load this up. Part of the pilot, they were given a classroom set of Chromebooks. And so this evening we have some of the students from Ms. de Barden-Laden's class to share with you some additional information about how they integrate technology in the classroom.
Just going to try. That's your Gmail. I'm going to log into my Google account real quick. Pull up their presentation. Actually, just to let you know what we're doing, my students created a slideshow through Google and they shared it with me, so I'm pulling up all of the items that have been shared with me to pull up their presentation. Okay. Perfect. All right. Good evening, Dr. Aguilar and Board Members. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. You saw me in the video. My main push for technology is the ability to empower our students. When our students graduate, they're going to graduate into a world that's full of technology. And I want our students in Lafayette Parish to be competitive with their peers that graduate from private schools in the area, from schools around the state, from schools throughout the nation. And it's never too early to put technology in their hands. I want my students to have the technology to start exploring all the possibilities that technology offers. It's like one of the principals said, it's limitless. When their hands are on technology, their learning is absolutely limitless. And beyond the academics, one of my favorite parts of having our computers in our classroom is that their Chromebooks, this is the device that they use. It's called a Chromebook and it's linked to their Google account, so everything they do is all linked together. I have a Google Classroom and it kind of functions as social media, but in a monitored way. And it has done so much for the community in our classroom. I'll post like shout out to Brylin for completing his Quizlet and all of his friends are on the classroom saying, way to go, man. Thank you, Ms. D, for posting this. I really learned a lot. This is really helping me study for my test. So the community has just been wonderful in the classroom. And so these are my wonderful 4th grade students and they have prepared a quick little presentation for you on their own.
Since it is fun and engaging, we learn and still have fun with our Chromebooks. For example, at the end of our presentation, you will get to see a video of us using the Quizlet Live website. This is a team competition where Ms. D created it to review for our test.
Researching is more efficient using our Chromebooks than a textbook. For example, if we're forced to finish a test, it's more efficient to look up the words in our Chromebooks rather than having to turn the pages in a regular textbook.
Learning is much more interesting with technology. For example, whenever we researched and created an economics presentation, it was much more easier than a worksheet.
I feel more confident in school now and this technology we're using is going to prepare us for the real world. And as we get older, we're going to use the same technology, but more advanced.
Students are creating a PowerPoint about economics using the provided articles.
My friend Ben is working on his economics presentation.
This is another student working on their presentation with their article and the internet.
When I said earlier, we're going to get to see the video, this is the video where we were using the Quizlet Live website.
And I want you to notice how engaged they are and how excited they are to be working as a team to review for their test. It was beautiful.
Thank you for letting us do this presentation and...
Thank you so much for having us tonight.
Do you have any questions or comments?
I have a comment. I think it was great. It's great to see you guys using that Chrome. And I've seen a workshop from a band director in Orleans Parish do it with bands. It works across all subject matter, I guarantee you. Thank you again, students and teachers.
Have a good night.
Thank you so very much. They told me they were not nervous and they certainly were not nervous. They did a wonderful job.
Next on our agenda is the 2002 Half-Cent Sales Tax Interest Reserve Payment to Classroom Teachers. Mr. Guidry, Mr. Dugall?
I'm pulling up the agenda item if you could give me just a minute. Each May, we prepare a calculation based on the interest earned on our sales tax collections in our 2002 Sales Tax Fund and the resulting per-eligible teacher amount in this year. This year, that amount is $42.60 and that amount will be remitted in the month of May, at the end of the month, I believe in a separate payroll check that'll accompany their monthly payroll check. So this is an annual distribution that we're required to make and so we wanted to just inform the board of the dollar amount.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hidalgo?
Mr. Guidry, are we required to pay it in a separate check?
By doing so, it's easier for them to see so that it'll be noticeable. It's such a small amount because again, it's just the interest. So by doing so, it just, it keeps everybody aware who's receiving it, that they've actually received it.
May I ask, how much does it cost the system to make this noticeable? $42?
Oh, I would say, well, at this point, the cost would be minimal from the standpoint that we're now paperless. So we're no longer distributing advices, things of that nature. So I think the cost would be minimal only because we're no longer actually processing paper checks. So when I say a separate check, it's a separate electronic check, so to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Guidry? Moving along then, we will go to item 5.3, which is Personnel Changes for May. Mr. Langer?
President Angel, Dr. Aguilar, we have several introductions, so we're not finished with recognition tonight. So what I'd like to do is do those introductions of new staff appointments, promotions. And then if there are any questions on personnel changes, I'll be happy to answer them. The first person I would like to introduce is Pauline Duplantis. Ms. Duplantis has earned a Bachelor of Science degree in education and Master's of Education degree in guidance and counseling from UL Lafayette. Pauline worked for the Diocese of Lafayette in the positions of English teacher, counselor, and director of guidance. and director of guidance. She served as a guidance counselor for Alice Boucher Elementary and Lafayette High School. Her most recent position has been coordinator of student services for the Lafayette Parish school system. And gratefully and thankfully that she interviewed for one of the two positions that was available and she's received it. So congratulations, Mrs. or Ms. Duplantis, on your promotion to coordinator of counseling services and student placement for Lafayette Parish school system.
Dr. Aguilar, Board members, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity that y'all have given to me. And I'd like to have special thanks go out, shout out to Annette Samick for her tireless work in the district and a person that sometimes goes unheard, and that's Brian A. Bear. Thank you for your support.
The second person I would like to introduce this evening is Ms. Tanya A. Bear. Ms. Tanya A. Bear has earned a Bachelor of Science degree in science education from UL Lafayette and a Master of Arts degree in counseling from Southern University. Ms. A. Bear served at Karen Crowe High School for 19 years, 14 of those years as a science teacher and five years as a high school counselor. During her outstanding service record, Ms. A. Bear has been awarded the Lafayette Parish High School Counselor of the Year in 2015-16, Karen Crowe High's High School Teacher of the Year in 2005, and was a nominee with Lafayette Education Foundation Teacher Awards from 1998 to 2004. Congratulations, Ms. A. Bear, on your promotion to coordinator of counseling services and student placement at Lafayette High School.
Thank you, Dr. Aguilar, President, Board members, and Ms. Samick. Thank you for this amazing opportunity to work with a great team of individuals for the betterment of our students. My passion has always been the students and for keeping their best interests in mind.
The next person I would like to introduce is Ms. Tia Lebrun. Ms. Tia Lebrun earned a Bachelor of Science or Bachelor's degree in secondary education in 2004 from Louisiana State University. In 2012, she earned a Master's in Special Education from the University of New Orleans and has recently received her Educational Leadership Certificate from Our Lady of Holy Cross College. Ms. Lebrun has been a French language teacher in Caucashu Parish since 2004 while also serving as regional representative for the Louisiana Foreign Language Association. She has also served as chapter secretary, national French test administrator, and Louisiana social media coordinator for the American Association of Teachers of French. Congratulations, Ms. Lebrun, on your appointment as World Language Specialist.
Bonsoir, Monsieur le Président Angel, Dr. Aguilar, and tous les autres membres du Board. I'm really excited to have been chosen to build upon what Nicole Boudreaux has built here with you guys and the support of the whole parish, which is amazing. I'm glad that I already know several of the teachers and a couple of board members I've met already, so that's nice. And thanks for all of the support that I've seen from Ms. Samick so far and Dr. Aguilar and Nicole. So thanks for having me, I guess.
Je vous dis bonne chance.
She's quite an enthusiastic woman and the person that she is replacing has an equal level of enthusiasm and passion for the French language and so we're happy to see that she's been appointed to this position. Mr. Rollin Moore is the next gentleman I'd like to introduce. Mr. Moore earned a Bachelor of, Bachelor's degree in general studies in 2009 from the University of Louisiana at Lafayette. He entered the Alternative Certification Program at UL where he received his teaching certificate in May of 2012. In August 2012, he earned a Master's in Educational Leadership from the University of Louisiana at Monroe and is currently working on his doctorate in educational leadership. Mr. Moore started with Lafayette Parish school system as a substitute employee, managing as the system operator and human resources for the substitute system and the finance division. Once certified, he began teaching 4th grade and middle school subjects in St. Landry Parish as well as being an administrative assistant, which was an administrator in training. It's a developmental position. In October 2012, he returned to Lafayette Parish as an academic behavior coordinator for Alice Boucher Elementary. Before moving up to assistant principal, he has been the assistant principal at Lafayette Middle for the 2015-16 school year. Congratulations, Mr. Moore, on your appointment to the position of principal at Acadian Middle.
Dr. Aguilar, President Tommy Angel, Board members, staff, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to lead the students and the stakeholders of Acadian Middle forward. I would like to give special thanks to my parents, Sandra, please stand, and my father, Quentin, please stand, and a portion of my brothers, Quentin, Terrell, Ramon, please stand. And my aunt, who is a counselor at W. Falk, please stand. I would also like to give thanks to my Alice Boucher family. I'm not going to make y'all stand. And also my Lafayette Middle family who have given me grief since they have announced the appointment. Thank you all and I look forward to leading Acadian Middle in the right direction.
The last introduction I would like to make is Ms. Jerry K. Victorian. Ms. Victorian earned a Bachelor, a Bachelor's of Education degree from UL Lafayette and a Master of Education degree from LSU Shreveport. She is, she is also certified in library science and that certificate's from UL Lafayette. K. began her career in education with St. Landry Parish as an elementary school teacher at South Street Elementary from 1997 to 2005, where she taught first grade, language arts for French immersion, and as a lead teacher. She then became the librarian at Opelousas Senior until 2008 and transitioned to administration where she served as assistant principal at Opelousas Junior High School and then moved to Cresswell Elementary School until 2013. Ms. Victorian joined Lafayette Parish school system in April of 2013, serving as itinerant assistant principal for Milton Elementary and Middle School and Youngsville Middle. Shortly thereafter, K. was appointed principal at Green Tea Linden Elementary. Congratulations, Ms. Victorian, on your appointment to the position of Library Science Media Specialist with the Lafayette Parish school system.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Aguilar. Thank you, Ms. Samick, Mr. Craig, Board, Board President. I come here with just a heart filled with gratitude for all of the blessings that I have been given and this being one of them. I am thrilled to be able to be moved from the instructional leader position to being a support for those instructional leaders, to be able to work with my fellow principals and to be able to work with the central office staff to ensure that our district continues to move forward. Literacy is the basis of all learning and I think that as the library media specialist at Lafayette Parish, I can help to support that and continue our quest to be an A. district. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you.
Are there any questions on personnel changes? Thank you. President Angel.
The next list of items that I'll read out for us are introduction items, which will be acted upon at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which I believe will be in June. I'm just going to read them out. 6.1 Assistant Principals Contract and Specific Performance Objectives. 6.2 Request for Approval of Grant Submission. 6.3 Approval of Revised Job Description for Program Coordinator. 6.4 Consider Shifting Student Enrollment from Lafayette High to Como High Beginning with the 1718 school year. 6.5 Implementation of Decision Regarding Shifting Student Enrollment from Lafayette High to Como High. 6.6 Consider Approval of JCFA Lafayette Charter School Application. 6.7 Consider Approval of ATHLOS Academy Charter School Application. 6.8 Student Identification Policy, JGFH and JBC. 6.9 Vision 2020 Technology Plan. And 6.10 Auto Liability Insurance Limits for Contract Buses. Moving along to item 7, Time Sensitive Action Items. I would read the items and if you want them pulled, please indicate. 7.1 Fiscal Year '16 General Fund Budget Revision Request for Social Worker. 7.2 Bus Routing and Planning Software for Student Transportation. Dr. Aguilar, is that, is that the presentation? Okay. Yeah, we'll pull it. 7.3 Approval of Contract with Heritage Institutional Services, Agent Trust for Pension Services. Okay, if we would accept a motion to approve 7.1 and 7.3?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Lachale and, Mr. Hidalgo, second?
Yes.
That we approve 7.1 and 7.3? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Any questions or comments from members of the board? If not, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
During our review of staffing rosters, it was noted that only three of the four slots had been cut and fifth had been made. The position has been included in the proposed budget, but will require budget revision. Billy, this item here is...
7, 4, 1 against.
Okay, motion carries and now we will go on to 7.2, which is Bus Routing and Planning Software for Student Transportation. Mr. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Angel. Okay, at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Greg Fogarty and Mr. Lance Guy from Tyler Industries Versatrans Software. At the board's request, they're going to do a short presentation about their software and product line and answer any questions you have. Mr. Guy?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Board President, and members of the school board. My name is Lance Guy. I'm with Tyler Technologies and this is my counterpart, Mr. Greg Fogarty. And we are here to better explain the proposal that we submitted through the RFP process and go through the pieces of the software modules for transportation and then explain a little bit more about the GPS and the student tracking components and the costs and the benefits to the districts, district parish. So our agenda consists of an introduction and then the integrated product suite and who our company is and then the return on investment. We've done some analysis to show the return on your school bus fleet of 300-plus buses and what that could potentially do to reduce your $20 million-ish budget. So, yes, Mr. Guy, G-U-Y.
Mr. Guy, a quick question before you get started. I had requested it, but the only thing specifically that I personally want to see was the individual breakdown and I want to know what page I could find it on before you get started.
Mr. Craig has one and I can talk to it right now. It's a separate document, but I can tell you, I broke it, I broke out the pieces. So our proposal was software. So there's software, there's maintenance, there's implementation, there's all these pieces on the blue bar and I know it's confusing. So I broke it out separately, Mr. Craig, to say, "Here's what the routing costs, here's what the parent portal costs, here's what the trip software costs," and it was all separate in chunks. So the, the wheel looks like this. It, well, and so I broke them out by cost. The one on the top is the core product and I broke them out all the way around the circle. So I wanted to explain the products and what the benefit is to the district.
Okay.
So I, would you like, I can answer your question now if you'd like on the cost.
I don't want to, I don't want to interrupt, but at the same time, that's, that's all specific. I had requested it. That's the only thing that I specifically wanted. I'm sure the board may want to hear the presentation. I would like to at least start looking at it ahead of time because I went through the presentation and I was just looking for the individual cost breakdown for, for the GPS and then the information portal, the field trip management. There we go. All right.
There you go. So that's an Excel, that's a little document I did that matches our proposal. It ties exactly to the numbers and it's by product set. There you go. Okay. Okay, so without further ado, in respect to your time, I'm going to try to keep this to 15 minutes. I'm going to go through the product wheel rather quickly and then we'll do questions and answers at the end. Is that acceptable? Okay. I'm going to do my best. It'll be 15 minutes and we're going to go really quickly. So we have proposed an integrated product suite within our RFP response. We will be discussing throughout the presentation the different applications, which you're seeing on the screen that we proposed, as well as, more importantly, I think, the return on investment that the board, an investment of this significance. I think you'll get that money back within a year and we're going to hopefully show that to you tonight. So the top product on that wheel there was called Versatrans Routing and Planning and this is the foundation of the transportation software suite to manage the bus routes and stops for your roughly 18,000 students that you transport daily. So both your regular ed and special ed routes are managed in this one platform, this one system. The software can also assist you with your upcoming redistricting for the 2017-18 year. It has a very significant boundary planning and analysis tool built in as well. This will provide the board with the transportation and the transportation department with the tools to analyze the efficiencies of routing while weighing what the new boundaries would look like and the associated downstream transportation costs for the future. So we can easily import new boundaries from a demographer or a parish and we can run very fast, your staff can run very fast what-if scenarios to get future transportation and demographic information as well out of this system. So it's routing, but it's also a very significant planning tool. And that's the core product. So I'm going to move on to what we call E-Link is the commercial name of this next product and it, it is in addition to the routing program. So E-Link will provide the community and campuses with a, with a portal into the bus routes and transportation that the transportation department has published. So it's a very simple, read-only, user-defined parent portal where you can say, "My child is picked up in the AM at this stop at this time, dropped off in the PM at this stop in this time." It can be as robust or as minimal as you need it to be. A realtor could see, "Yes, this, this house has a, an eligible ride or not." So parents will have their own username and password. They will only see their child. It's highly user-protected and it's read-only and it looks at the routing software. So it's very low maintenance. If the routing software is up to date, so will be E-Link. Trip Tracker, I've, I've been over the past year onsite here multiple times. Your department has been looking vigorously at better solutions to organize your rather large transportation system and I can tell you without question, Trip Tracker would really be a valuable tool for you. And this Trip Tracker product talks to the core product called Routing and Planning. It shares the same database, same vehicles and campuses, so they talk in the SQL database. So Versatrans Trip Tracker is a web-based system for managing field trips. All you need is a browser from a campus or anywhere to access the system. It allows the campuses to request field trips and then it manages the workflow to complete the trip all the way through. So it goes from the campus or coach request to an approval, maybe at the principal's So it goes from the campus or coach request to an approval, maybe at the principal level to transportation, scheduling the bus and then finally billing and the reconciliation all the way through. So I, I can tell you now, you're chasing a lot of paper and you're a very fairly large system. And it, this would be a very significant time savings for the district. So it will enable the transportation department not only to free up the time, but eliminate the paper. And you'll have summary reporting by campus for all your trips in a very quick fashion at your fingertips. So Fleet Vision is the next product in the suite. And Fleet Vision is our, our fleet software that will allow mechanics to plan preventive maintenance. And over time, the district will be able to understand what the cost per mile is to run the fleet by vehicle. So it tracks labor, parts, fuel and provides a complete picture of the fleet. We can import your fuel card data as well. It's a very robust reporting capabilities as well. Just lots of customer reporting. I know you're, you've got a significant contractor fleet, but also a significant board-owned fleet. And I think you're moving in that direction. So powerful fleet maintenance software will very much pay for itself in the short term. Okay, so the last software component, and I can see where there's some confusion with all these models, modules and the hardware piece of it too. But we have a piece of software and our software is called OnScreen. And so I'll get to the GPS and student tracking hardware components shortly, but first I'll explain what this is. So OnScreen is the GPS software interface that gives the transportation department real access, real-time access to route information so that they can quickly answer questions on current driver activity like stops taken or not stopped, stops missed, travel speed, stop times, idling duration, all the things that are happening on the street that you can't see from your desk. So we can do on-time performance to schools and a lot more. So in this slide, you can see how the transportation department will also be able to identify when the students are boarding or deboarding the bus. It could save precious time if you're missing a kid at the end of the day, particularly a youngster, and you don't know where he or she got off. If, if in fact it went with student tracking, one of the components of this OnScreen you see there on the left is that you can get on, off timestamps and location timestamps. So it has some other things that it does well. It can track reimbursement for Medicaid eligible riders. You could enforce ridership policies by knowing who's actually eligible and actually got on or not to the bus. So that's OnScreen. It does more than just this. Here's another shot of OnScreen. I think this is important to you to know. This particular screenshot is called an off-path report on the left there on the table. Transportation will have a complete understanding of where the drivers are going off the planned route. So it talks to the routing software and we know your route is supposed to be this. Here are your 10 stops, this many miles. But it can run a report by percentage. So you can see that this driver is 25% off path. So a couple percent might not be worth looking at, but the significant ones you can, you can click on the hyperlink. So when transportation clicks on the blue hyperlink on the right there, you see how the driver varied from the route to know whether or not the routing system needs to be updated or the driver needs to maybe be advised to please stay on the planned route. So what's interesting here, I think, at Lafayette is that the software can generate a summary report detailing the total miles driven per route per day to help manage and validate the per-mile reimbursement that happens here in your system. So that's the software piece. And now with all those, the My Stop app requires the routing program, the E-Link program and the, the GPS, which is about to show. So all these components, once you have them, there's a free app, free app, that the parents can download and get real-time information about bus arrival and departure in real-time so they'll know when to go to the stop or if they've missed a bus. So on this screen, for example, we'd let the parent know the ETA on that left phone on the very bottom. It's kind of small, but it says it's this far from your house. So on the right phone, if you had the student scanning, you could see your child got on or off, when and where, in very near real-time on the smartphone app. So it's something that might be, you know, phase two after you get the larger stuff in place. But it's, we've got lots of districts nationally using it and it's a phenomenal technology. So after, that, that's the software piece. And I know there's some confusion about the hardware. And I know I'm going fast. Are there any questions at this point or do you want me to keep, keep moving? Okay, all right. So Tyler Telematic, Tyler's our company and Telematic is a industry term for tracking things. In this case particularly, we're talking about GPS on this first set of slides. So our fully-integrated GPS system is plugged into the onboard diagnostic port on the vehicle and wired into the buses through a cable. So we've also included a driver key fob so the drivers can sign in, which will allow the transportation department and district to know who is driving which vehicles and how they are driving them. So the Tyler Telematic GPS hardware measure, a lot of information about how drivers are driving the vehicles and it can do scorecards and have some interesting safety results in the positive side. So some of the examples that you'll get from having a GPS device, and that's in the top left there, are you'll see heartbraking or rapid accelerations or rapid cornering. So by understanding how your drivers drive, you can reward the ones that are driving well and work with the drivers that need improvement. So pictured clockwise from the top left is the GPS unit. It's about the size of a pack of playing cards. And then the cable that connects to the vehicle diagnostic port. And then the input cable that captures vehicle events like red lights flashing, yellow lights flashing, door open, stop arm. These are important events that you'll see in the next few slides that bring all the information together when you're trying to analyze a fleet. So, and then the driver can key fob and it'll associate the driver to the vehicle. That's the piece on the lower left. So some of the things that's really interesting about robust GPS, and in this case, we resell a product that's called GeoTab. It's been configured for us and a lot of the commercial fleets, UPS uses it. It's a very impressive device. So in addition to speeding, idling, on-time reports, planned versus actual data, the system provides accident recreation pictured in real, near real time. So pictured up here is a real customer example. And at the first, the bus driver was sighted at the scene and the accident was later exonerated, and he was later exonerated using the GPS data, which saved the district from potential, potentially costly lawsuit or bad publicity at a minimum. So what we see here is the driver applying the brakes, swerving to the left to avoid the car and then pulled out in front of it and unfortunately over-correcting and hitting the car. The driver of the car falsely claimed that the bus was driving down the median and that is why it pulled out. And the GPS data was able to show that not only was the bus where it was supposed to be, but took evasive action to try and avoid the accident. So both charges were dismissed in this example. We've got actually numerous examples like this. I think our company transport, transports 25% of the, of the nation in terms of routing. So we've, this has held up in court numerous times for us and it is admissible in court. So it's the granularity of the data with the one-second resolution, which makes it admissible in most court jurisdictions. So I'm going to speed through this a little bit, but the onboard diagnostics give you engine fault codes and it talks to the fleet software. So if something gets hot or an engine is in the, in danger of actually blowing to, you know, the tune of a $10,000 bill, which is not uncommon, the techs will know about it quickly, but it'll also tell you minor code things like the battery has low voltage and this thing's not going to start tomorrow. So onboard diagnostics are really, really useful once you get to that point. So that was GPS. So we'll stop there. So we've got routing and all the pieces and then we have GPS, which is bus location and all those diagnostics that come with it. So the item on the device on the top left is our GPS device from a company called GeoTab. And you can plug things into that device. So it has a real live cellular connection to the router's computer, whoever wants to log in and look at the OnScreen. And then if you wanted to do student tracking there, in the second picture in the middle, there's a reader, a little RFID reader in the stairwell. And it's short-range. The kids would have a card, beep, Johnny just got on the bus and it did timestamp and location, latitude, longitude. So these are components. So there's an additional component if you want to take the next step and add to the GPS, the telematics and do student tracking, it would be the reader and then you'd have to deploy cards. And these are RFID cards. They're typically three or four bucks a pop. You could print a barcode on them. You could print a picture ID on them with a thermal transfer printer. So, and then speaking with the transportation department, there is a potential for $175 a day or so for those rider eligible, riders eligible for Medicaid reimbursement. I think you're doing it on paper now. So you might be capturing that now, but when it gets electronic, it gets a lot more powerful and the manual labor is reduced greatly. I think there's something to the tune of $70,000 a year there in reimbursement from what I understand here. So additionally, with student tracking, you can really tighten up the routes. You can be able to identify underutilized stops through inactivity reports, which allows a potential for optimizing your routes based on who is not riding the bus to and from school. So in a, you know, 300 route scenario with buses that get six miles a gallon and you're making stops that aren't full, you can do timing capacity studies and do some things that really tighten the system and generate return on investment. So the, the reporting is, is numerous in the interest of your time. There's not much you can't get out of these GPS reports and they're powered by GeoTab. They're awesome. So driver safety scorecards measured on lots of different criteria. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Greg Fogarty and he's going to wrap this up quickly on our company and then show you some of the ROI with the numbers we got from your district. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Aguilar, Mr. President and Members of the Board, my name is Greg Fogarty. I'm the Group Vice President for the Transportation Team at Tyler Technologies. Wanted to kind of give you a quick overview of who Tyler is so you understand the partnership you're getting when you make a purchase like this. We understand it's quite significant for the district and it needs its due consideration. So it's important that you understand who, who you're partnering with at this point. Tyler is a public company founded in 1966. We're $6 billion market cap and floated on the US Stock Exchange. The, the annual revenues of the company this year, that number's not actually up today, is going to be closer to about $900 million. We've been in the transportation business, the Versatrans piece of this for over 35 years. And about 25% of the nation's children are transported by Tyler Transportation. These are some of our office locations. Just to kind of demonstrate to you, we're, we're well-spread across the country, well-represented. And we have several locations that support our software services. We are the number-one software supplier in the public sector, meaning we supply software to municipalities, court systems, police systems, all the way across the public sector. We'd been asked to kind of come up with an ROI for this type of a software package. A little challenging. So we have to make some assumptions. We have to ask some questions. We went through that with the transportation group. These are some of the sample questions that we came up with so that we could develop a ROI based on how your operation runs today. Joe Craig and his team were kind enough to provide us with this information and based on this, we kind of developed the, the case. This is kind of where you are today, the, the cost per mile per bus. Basically what this is representing, for every student that you're transporting, it's, you're, you're roughly traveling 200 miles per year. So we asked a few questions about that. What would be a reasonable assumption in terms of savings per, per route? Would 500 feet be a reasonable assumption? 500 feet is roughly 10% of a mile. So that's a very conservative number and, and we, we felt like it was reasonable. From that, we also said 15 minutes. If we could save 15 minutes in a route, what would that look like? And idle time is another big problem for fuel consumption and very costly overhead. So we said if we can save 10 minutes in idle time, what's that worth? So here is some of the, the, the annual savings based on, on the 500 feet. So if you, if you look at this, year one, you're, you're at 4,600 miles that you've, you've transported. Now bear in mind, this is all just on, on an assumption. We have a district that, that just won an award in, in Magnolia, Texas. And they, they were able to save a million dollars in their first year of operation. They, they had a significant, they were able to reduce their routes so significantly, reduce their staffing and become more efficient to the tune that, that they had a significant cost savings. They were roughly half the size of this district. So, so this is a very conservative number. We feel like these numbers are really attainable and, and, and actually a good representation of what districts are able to achieve. So, so we said, we took the assumption that it's 2%. If, if, if you can, if you can reduce your budget by 2% by implementing this software, what does that look like? Well, the savings year one, you're looking at about $414,000. And, and based on that, we're seeing that you can, you can pay back this system in about 103 school days. This kind of just lays out the savings over the course of about five years. If, if, if it's, if it's straight line, I mean, you're talking about a little bit of an uptick as things improve. But, but from year one through year, through year five, you're looking at between $414,000 and $465,000 based on the numbers we know today and based on some of those assumptions. So, so at a very high level, that's what we were asked to kind of come up with. Give us an, give, give the board an idea of what districts are able to achieve in terms of savings when they implement this software and use it the way it's designed. And, and this is a good representation of that. This is the district I talked about in Magnolia. They were just presented with an award at our Connect Conference last week in Phoenix. And they're, they're a good representation of, of how well the software can improve the district's processes. So that's all the information we have. I hope it's been helpful. We, we're, we're excited about the opportunity at the, at the, at this district. We're looking forward to any questions that the group might have.
Out of the districts that you mentioned, are there any districts that, that don't go with the entire system?
Yes, there, it, it really depends on the district's needs and requirements. Sometimes there's a carved-out section of this. The suite is, is all-encompassing. As is the ROI when you implement something like this. It's all-encompassing, right? You, you, you get, get certain benefits out of different pieces of the, of the system. When we talked to the transportation group here, they were adamant about certain portions that they needed, like student tracking, like GPS. So it was, you know, and then in, in order to enable those other functions, you need to have the base product of RP. So, so the answer, the simple answer to your question is yes, but there's, there's a lot of caveats to that. And there's a lot of reasons that you would or would not, depending on what the needs of the district are.
Okay, second question and probably my last. Out of the possible choices that some districts choose to go with, what would be the number-one item that they tend to say, ah, we'll do without that one? And then what would be the second item that you've noticed?
Oh, that's a good question. Lance, what have you seen in?
Just curious.
You're more attuned to this.
Within this suite, honestly, within this suite, this proposal, the student tracking can be a phase two. There's, there's some nuances to it. You gotta manage the cards. You've got to replace the cards. You've got to potentially charge the cards. But it's powerful. If you can pull it off, it's very powerful. But that would be something that could very easily be a phase two down the road. The GPS is fairly ubiquitous now. I, I would say more often than not, I don't know what the number is, but it's a high number of districts have GPS. And the ones that have gone to it have, you, there's no going back. It's really powerful. And, and there's a cultural effect that happens when the, the drivers know that they're accountable. Not that they're trying not to be accountable, but they know that there's accountability. The bad behaviors really tend to stop. I've seen this for, I've been doing this almost a decade and it's really powerful. So I would recommend that if you could pull it off.
Mr. Centeni?
Yes, sir. So the student tracking, is this a, I wasn't privy to the cost information. I mean, I saw, saw it very briefly before the meeting, but I wanted to refresh what the number was on. And how, how much of the ROI, I don't know if you guys can break it down this granularly for us. How much of the ROI is due to the student tracking? I don't think we're saving miles by student tracking, right?
Right, you're absolutely not. You know, the student tracking piece of it, I would, would suggest is, is valuable for the parents, the public and, and just the perception of the transportation group within the district. Just, just to have that level of granularity is, is very powerful for parents to be able to kind of understand when students got on and off the bus. In terms of the ROI, it does not have a huge impact or really any financial impact. It's, it's more of a public perception impact.
And are we able to, obviously when I saw the app, you're not going to see that your kid got on the bus.
Correct.
Right, but are they going to be able to see where the bus is?
Yeah, I believe with, with GPS, with the OnScreen and E-Link software, they can get the, the, the location of the bus.
Using, using the app or do they have to get on the website to do it?
Using the app.
Okay, all right. So that, that brings us down to 370? Is, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, but you're analyzing whether or not to have the, the company host the software, which isn't in my little tally there.
It's going to be my next, it's going to be my next question.
That's not been disclosed to me yet, but, so the student tracking piece is you could, you could take a 635 minus about 200 grand.
Okay, all right. So we're at 435 and, and we haven't paid to have you guys host it yet?
No, I think, if I'm not mistaken, you took my document, but it's, the 435 includes the hosting.
Oh, it's on here?
I think it is. And the hosting was approximately 15 grand total and there's some setup in there and then, but there's no, no IT burden for Lafayette Parish.
Is the, is the maintenance planned? Does this include you guys helping with the rerouting or is that?
There's some services in there that are onsite route building. And those are optional, but given the size of your staff and the number of routes, we want to propose having onsite route building. And the routes don't take that long to build, but you've got a lot of them, so.
And the 16, six, $16,638 is the number you're looking for?
Yep.
Is that, that's per year?
What are you referring to? Is it the route building?
The hosting. The hosting.
Okay, good. Let me look at my document here, sorry about that. Yes, that's year one, 16, 638, and it goes down slightly. It's around 15 per year, but it is ongoing, yes.
And if we have you guys host it, what would be required for us to host it, I guess would be the better question?
It's a SQL server. I did have a conversation with your IT director, but I had not, we haven't, I don't know what her decision was, but it's, I gave her technical specifications and it's a pretty significant server, but you have SQL server onsite, so it's not...
Mr. Dickerson, Tommy? If I could interrupt for a second. I talked to Ms. Dickerson, we talked about us hosting the product. It would take us roughly a server or servers in the neighborhood of $30,000 to $40,000 that we'd have to replace yearly. And I guess, oh, every five years, I'm sorry, yes, sorry about that. And I guess the other concern with the IT department is we only have two network specialists, so for us to take care of the maintenance and the upgrades and the monitoring, it's kind of a labor issue for us with the academic components that we're already watching.
Certainly. So final question on the hosting, do we have access to the data? And how do we access the data?
Absolutely. We use a, it's similar to a Citrix client, it's a little desktop app that's called 2X. And so it's, all you need's a browser. And so it's...
Oh, I'm actually asking, like, can I get to the raw data?
Which raw data? The student, like, PAMS?
No, I mean, like, geo-tagged where the buses have been, mileage.
Yes, yes. Yeah, that's in routing and planning, yes.
Do we have access to the tables or do we have to get like a...
You do. And it's your software, yes, absolutely. And it's, it does a lot, but it's user-friendly. And then there's, in terms of the GPS data, yeah, anybody with a login, and we have an unlimited user license. But when it's hosted, there's a little third-party piece of software that's a couple, 200, 300 bucks a pop for an additional user to get to the database that's in the cloud.
And is that included in the hosting or is that actually...
Yes, we included a number of users. I don't remember how many we did, but usually it's four or five. It's the core transportation staff. But then the trip tracker and the e-link are web-based, that product doesn't apply. They were intended to be web-based, they're not server-based.
Okay, so I understand you correctly. We can do the $370,000, the $16,000 for hosting, and then we have the installation and whatever was included last week. Is that right, Dr. Aguilar? The number that brought it from 635 to 972 or whatever it was? Am I remembering these numbers correctly? 758?
I don't think we're ever that high. I think our total all-in was 635.
Maybe I'm thinking of the other one.
You might be. Yeah, I think our total all-in, our highest price tag, I believe, was 635 all-in.
All-in, including travel and everything like that?
Yeah, it's a travel max, but that's correct. So you're looking at more of a 450-ish if you didn't have student tracking.
All right. I kind of want to go with my, like, a similar motion from last week. Does anybody else want to?
I have one question. Mr. Evans, can you come up and answer some questions regarding student tracking issues we may have had in the past? Do you have a potential cost or man-hours that we expend annually, maybe overtime, or any sort of way to quantify the cost of the potential of when we, I don't want to say misplaced, but you know, kids can't be found and don't necessarily get off where they're supposed to?
Yeah. I couldn't put a number, you know, the bottom line, hey, it costs us this year to actually find all the misplaced children that get on the wrong bus or not get on the right bus. And matter of fact, we had one yesterday that I found at 5:45. You know, she got on the right bus, they had two loads on the same school, she didn't get off on her stop the first time, they went back to the school, and I had five of my staff looking for this one child. And, you know, if I take an hour to find one child with five different staff members, is that $100 per hour or $150 per hour? I couldn't tell you that, but that's where we kind of look at. Now, that happens on, well, I'm not going to say a daily basis, but it happens often. It might happen two or three times a week where I have pretty much everybody in my staff that is in the office at a certain time looking for one child. And it's not like we've totally lost a child, it's just that that child didn't get on the right bus or got checked out by a parent or something like that.
Mr. Kenezic, if I could just interrupt for a second. One of the things that the product that offers that we think we'd really value is through March 31st, July 1, 2015 to March 31, 2016, our schools have made 1,930 extra field trips, athletic events. All of those are currently done on paper. The school does a paper form and sends it or emails it to the office, the office finds a bus driver, the driver drives the route, turns the paper in, the paper goes from the school to payroll, actually goes to transportation and payroll. The fleet, the trip management is going to take all that paperwork. It will make it almost paperless. And overtime that that lady in transportation is doing to do these 1,900 trips will be over 2,000 trips probably by the end of the year, I think is going to result in a significant savings.
Yeah. Mr. Centeni, the Mr. Broussard. Go ahead.
Other than putting fear in the driver's mind to drive safely, of the $21 million budget that we have, can you, in your expertise, foresee us eliminating 10, 15 buses after everything is said and done? Technology, you can see a savings. We can recoup our money in the next four or five years, but simply put, can we, do you foresee us eliminating X amount of buses once all said and done?
Yes, Mr. Broussard, absolutely. The tool has something called One Touch Routing, which it'll do, once you've got it set up and you've got your walk parameters in place, your stops, campuses, it'll actually, you can actually play with the parameters and say, "I want the load to be 50," or "I want the load to be 60," and "I want the ride time to be this," or "If I change this bell time by three minutes, what will happen?" And if you saw the demo, I know you would be impressed, and other districts have clipped, I'm not going to quote you a number of routes, but each route you can clip, it's about 50 grand a year with labor, fuel, four and a half hours a day depreciation. So each one you clip or cut, that's $40,000 in perpetuity starting year two. And so the return is fast. And fear is the wrong word for the drivers, but there's a heavy accountability component to adhering to your route and to the parameters and the walk zones that were set up. So confidently, we can clip routes.
Mr. Broussard, I'm sorry. One of the things that happens, we get those, we have the 1-800 tags on all the buses, and as those reports come in on the concerns, a lot of times it says the driver was driving too fast, or the driver hit the brakes too hard. With the tracking software, we can actually look and see how fast that driver was going, or did he hit the brakes too hard? Or did he, it actually has an angle, measures the angle if they're turning too hard, too fast.
It exonerates the driver far more often than not. It was a noisy bus, it seemed to be going fast, but it really wasn't, and you can prove that quickly to those inquiries. The savvy dispatchers will send them a screenshot with the actual miles per hour at that exact spot.
I can understand someone just having some hateful ways and calling in just for no special reason. But Mr. Craig, while you were speaking, does that eliminate, does this program eliminates a job?
It can, absolutely, especially when, like, in Calcasieu, they had driver shortages. They bought it for that reason, so they could tier it and they could make the asset move more efficiently and go get the little kids, change the bell time by a few minutes, and their driver shortage becomes far less painful. So a job, I wouldn't, I'm not sure you're flush with drivers here, very few are, but I think the opposite is true. They're trying to fill the gaps and do more with less so they don't have such driver shortage and customer service issues.
Mr. Kenezic?
I think there might be some room for you selling us on the student tracker option. I think that might be the area that the board might have more questions on. So, you know, from the estimate, I would say, you know, from Mr. Evans' estimate, we have maybe 100 instances a year and, you know, maybe five hours per instance. And I'm just talking about cost of personnel, so that's 500 man-hours. It doesn't quite justify a $200,000 student tracker bell and whistle. So can you talk to us a little more, maybe give us some more highlights on why, why would we want to spend $200,000 on student tracking?
In my experience, it's been, I live in a large district in Houston, and they want to enforce the walk zone or not. So if they make a change, they want to say, if you're two miles, you're going to walk, and so they can know who's maybe shouldn't be riding if in fact they need to enforce the zone. I've had other districts, I have seven or eight states, that really want to know if that young kid got off at the wrong stop. The magic bullet is an audible beep, "Stop that kid, he's off the wrong stop," in my experience. And so student tracking is not a new technology, it is starting to catch on in the last several years. I wouldn't say it's coming yet, but it's coming, it's coming, so.
The driver is alerted if a student attempts to get off at the wrong spot?
There are ways to do that, yes, but we don't have an audible beep right now, and there's a lot involved in that. The routing system really has to be right, and there's, beyond that PM stop, some kids go to daycare on Wednesdays, some kids go to, you know, Boys and Girls Club on other days. It's a lot to manage to get to that point. It's doable, but it's a phase two thing.
Thank you. Mr. Hidalgo, did you have any? Mr. Lachale?
If you get the student tracking, what is the recurring cost year in and year out? Do you have to keep buying ID cards and so forth and so on? What recurring costs would we have year in and year out?
I have not, I don't have that number on paper, but the card replenishment factor is there, and they're three bucks a card-ish, depending on the type of card, yes. Typically, you can have the parents have a break even so that, you know, if you lose the first card, maybe it's free second card, you have to replenish yourself. And the hardware really and the installation is the upfront cost. There's a little bit more data, not a lot. The GPS data is already sending the location information back and forth, it's just getting that scan on and off. So it's the upfront and the hardware, the installation, is pretty significant, and your fleet is spread out because of the parkouts, so.
Mr. Centeni, you want it? I think they are.
All right, so then our job here is to, Dr. Aguilar, you want us to tell you what we want off of this menu here? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We'll have a motion and we'll have public discussion, I assure you.
Right.
Go ahead, Mr. Centeni.
Well, I was asking, asking the question.
Mr. Centeni, my recommendation would be that you purchase the $435,000 package.
With hosting?
With hosting.
Okay. Okay, so I'll move that we purchase the software with GPS in a hosted configuration and direct staff to amend...
It plugs in.
...the fiscal year 1617 budget to amortize these cost savings out of transportation.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and by Mr. Centeni and a second by Mr. Kenezic.
Amend the fiscal year 1617 budget to amortize the cost savings out of the transportation budget.
Now, just have a question about, you mentioned budget. Dr. Aguilar, you, in the budget that we looked at, or in the proposed budget that was submitted to us, or maybe Mr. Guidry, you had money in that budget for this purchase?
The capital?
If it's approved this evening, what we'll do is revise the capital improvement project budget that we'll be bringing back to the board tomorrow night and reflect this adjustment in that budget. We didn't put it in there because the board hadn't taken action on it yet, but we can do so in time for tomorrow night's meeting.
And if we did that, if this motion were to pass and we did that, would we still be in the positive in terms of the overall budget? Or would we...
This is not in the general fund, it would run through capital improvements fund, so yes, sir, in the general fund.
So we have money in capital improvement?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was my question.
And the second part of mine is that they would revise the general fund budget so that the transportation budget would replenish the capital improvements budget over a number of years until the amount of money was paid back.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We had public comment, we had, I'm sorry.
The question was, what happens when little Johnny forgets his card and goes to get on the bus? Does the bus driver have to manually put him on and off or...
That's a great question, and it's a policy decision that the district would need to enforce. So typically, in my experience, they let them on, especially if they're young, but yes, that's a district policy decision. And I forwarded some best practices, there's been some roundtables in different states, and they've discussed that exact issue.
I mean, the example brought up, and it's very good, when you see it all the time, the students don't always bring their student ID and have the sticker on, so that was a concern for some of the bus drivers in all this. What do you do when the child doesn't have the card?
They let them on, and you know, you live with having 90% versus what you had before, but typically, the school bus, the card has to be bigger than transportation. So if you had an ID or cafeteria, something else, and the RFID card for school bus is with that, so you have one thing that's more important than just the bus, it tends to work out better.
Mr. Lachale, we met Monday with a group of administrators, elementary, middle and high school, and started tossing out those situations. What would happen if a kid didn't have an ID? How would you work IDs with a four-year-old Truman student? So we're playing with those ideas in a committee pending the outcome of the board's decision.
Mr. Hidalgo?
Mr. Centeni, I want to make sure I'm clear, your motion, the kids are not going to have a card. That's your motion, right? So we're not necessarily worried right now about little Johnny not having a card. I just want to make sure before I fold it.
But I will say, make this one case for the student tracker in that I think we're all well aware that the schools of choice transportation is what is really killing our transportation budget. And if we were ever to go to a system of transfer points or, you know, not having one bus pick up a kid in Carron Crow and bring him to Como, then this would be a pretty essential piece of that and probably well worth the cost in order to, you know, that's a place where having student tracker would reduce the number of routes and the complexity of our routes. So I don't think we should do that now, but that would be my case for it.
Mr. Kenezic?
What's the implementation timeframe if, in the future, we choose to implement student tracker?
Once you've got the GPS in place, it's a plug-and-play, so it's really installation, it's weeks. The hardware's the easy part, it's the change of behavior and the policies that you're going to have to shape and roll out the card is the challenge. And you really need to get out ahead of it and communicate it really well. And the ones I've seen work well, they'll do a few campuses at their option, and they'll embrace it, and then you roll it out slowly and it goes from there.
So we could pilot it for much less cost?
You could certainly do a number of units, a number of campuses first, absolutely. So the installation would be marginally higher because they're making another trip, but that's minor in the scheme, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions to comment? I want to make one quick analogy. Many years ago, when I was mayor of a small city, the police chief wanted us to buy a police dog. And he had a litany of reasons why we should buy the dog and how great an asset it would be to the police force. And he said it was so good that his dog was worth two men. Now, we had, I think, 12 men on the police department. So one of the aldermen said, "Well, why don't we buy two dogs and lay off four men?" So, Mr. Evans, obviously, I think at a minimum, this would save overtime, I'm assuming, but reduce overtime. But my question is, in analogy, what about staff? Would we still require the same number of employees in this department if we implemented the program?
Well, as of now, I want more, to be honest with you. I mean, and that's pretty much everybody across the district, because everybody's working two and three different jobs to try and get everything going, going forward with this and becoming more efficient. It would just let them do their main jobs of what they should be doing and not driving a bus and... not driving a bus and doing everything that, that, that takes them out of the office and out of their main job to do. I've got every single body, uh, every single person in, in my staff doing multiple sets of jobs. And, and that, that would actually make us, make us more efficient and actually do our, do our main jobs. You know, whoever's supposed to be in charge of, of the field trips is gonna be in charge of field trips. Whoever's my safety person is gonna be able to get out and audit routes and do what they're supposed to be doing. Right now, we just don't have time to do it, because we have so many different things that we're doing right now.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Centeni.
I'll, I'll confirm what Mr. Evans says, as I was going through the budget in transportation the other day. The overtime for his staff is quite high, and I asked Mr. Gidry about it, and Mr. Gidry, he said, I personally audited that because I saw the number, and I couldn't be right. And, uh, he asked a couple of the employees, said, why is the overtime cost so high? And they said, well, you know, I'm, I'm driving a bus for six hours a day, and then I got this other full-time job once I get back to the office. So, you know, we got people working a job and a half, two jobs, driving the buses, doing the paperwork and things like that. So, I think the real cost savings is gonna be not just in mileage and fuel, but in overtime as well.
Can I chime in?
Yes, sure.
I drive a route. That should never happen. Period. My assistant director drives a route. That shouldn't happen. We're not in the office enough to, to, to take care of the business that we should be taking care of. We try, we try the best that we can and, and handle every single problem that comes our way. But if we were in the office twenty-four, seven and doing our jobs, y'all wouldn't get any calls, or y'all would get a lot less calls.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Morrison.
I know this is not the first software we bought for transportation, and I know the last one we bought, I'm not sure what was the problem, we didn't have enough people working it, or it just was not what we thought it would be. Can you just kinda elaborate on what we bought and why it did not work for us?
I, I, somebody better than me would probably be a, a person to answer it. Whenever we bought that, that particular software, I wasn't here, and there was only like three, three, three people in my staff here. Um, the problem with that rollout and that, that we had eight, ten years ago is because the, the timeframe that they tried to do it for, a form, from was, was so constricted that they just didn't have enough time to actually do it properly. Okay? What we're trying to do with this and, and with our revamp in the brand-new high school that we have and changing academies from one school to the other school, this software actually helps us do that job. It helps us because we can say, hey, we've got a brand-new school, plug it in, I'm gonna have certain amount of, a certain amount of kids going to this school, it's gonna start at this time, tell me how many buses I'm gonna need. And it automatically says, you need sixteen buses, you need eighteen buses, you need twenty buses for that particular school. Okay, these are all of my kids that's gonna go to that school from the route for me. And it comes back and says, here's your routes. And it's, it tells you the times of your routes, the length of your routes, and everything else.
Can I chime in when you're done?
Yes.
Good, excellent. Good question. I do wanna take the, a moment to point something out, that we have an implementation component to our software that other companies don't. And the software you have is highly competent. It's been around decades, and it's, um, um, it's a, it's a, it takes a lot of time to make a change in that software. And so, ours doesn't, but there's a setup component to ours that's like a hundred and forty hours of work. So, we get the best map available from nine-one-one or from the parish. And so, we enter all the right-side streets, all the cross-street restrictions, and we make this smart map, a school bus map. And so, we, all the hazardous boundaries, we enter the schools, we enter the programs, grades, bell times, boundaries, addresses, all the house numbering. We hook it up to your JPAMs, and we do this, and we hand over something that is not perfect, but it's close. And so, the staff has minimal tweaking, and if you have turnover, there's not this huge retraining. And so, you have something that is, it belongs to the district that doesn't change, and it does this routing and school bus stop assignment in a highly accurate and automated way.
Just, just, just to add some color to that, it's, it's a, it's a kind of a partial market discussion in terms of the technology that's out there, what's been out there and, and what's more evolved and what's antiquated. From our analysis of what's in, in the market today, a number of the products that are out there have not been kept up to date with the latest technology, uh, the product you're using being one of them. The, the Tyler, as a company, has what we call the, our evergreen philosophy. The evergreen philosophy requires that we keep our software up to date and current with the latest technologies, and as a support client, you get the benefit of that. So, your software is kept current, you're kept up to date, and you will have the latest and greatest of everything that's available. So, when you buy the product, you're not buying something that's gonna be out of date two years from now. This is a constant investment for us. We, we, we spend a significant amount of capital every year reinvesting in our products.
So, if we come out with the next generation of the software, if you're current on your maintenance, that software is yours when you're ready to have it. You just have to pay the maintenance. So, we don't charge you the next twenty thousand dollar bill. You, you get the newest thing when you want it in that category for sunsetting something and moving something new.
How many hours a day you would think we would need someone to maintain the system to give it? I know we have to put things in it, take things out. There have to be a day-to-day maintenance?
No, it's not ours, it's not ours. The initial setup is fairly significant, but it talks to JPAMs every night, and Damon or Charity will come in, and she'll see on her dashboard, there were four red things, four new kids moved. Something didn't geocode. Four kids need a ride, they're eligible, they don't have one, and it's hyperlink, and they hit it, and they realize the address was wrong. They fix it, and the next nightly import, it knows that you've already fixed it, it doesn't blow up your work and overwrite that bad PO box again. Our system does some things that make it, it makes it, once you get it under control, it's, um, we have districts that will import from their student information system twice a day, four times a day. One kid needs, you know, it's, it's fast, and you don't have to, you don't have to feed and water the system, um, more than a minutes per day. You, you stay on top of it, but it's not, it's minutes, not hours.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hidalgo. Any other questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
While y'all are waiting for her to come up, do y'all mind refreshing your screen, and that way you can see the motion and get ready, be ready to vote?
Hello. Ella Arsumal. Um, is there any way that the school board could rent this system, try it out for a year? If it doesn't work for y'all, let it go? Rent or own? And I, it might be a silly question, but it's a thought.
How would that affect the budget?
Oh, the, the motion is, the motion is to purchase it. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Kinesik?
I recommend we approve this, uh, motion. I think the purchase of the software for four hundred and thirty-five roughly thousand dollars. Uh, I think we will see at least a two percent, if we see a two percent return, uh, on efficiency, it'll pay for itself in a year. If we are able to use the data to prove, uh, one accident that we may have is not our fault, that potentially saves us a half million dollars in one, one instance. Um, so I highly recommend that we approve this motion.
If there's no other, no other comments or questions, Madam Secretary will call for the vote. Motion carried. That was the last item, I'm sorry, Dr. Agar.
Mr. Donjo, just a couple of reminders. Uh, ECA graduation is at one PM tomorrow at the Cajun Dome. Actually, it's, it's the Cajun Convention Center, and then we have a five-thirty budget workshop tomorrow, and it, we have some agenda items, so we'll need six members to be present